Good evening, the Town of Newburgh. We'd like to welcome you to the Planning Board meeting of April 16th. This evening, we have five agenda items. Item number one and item number two are a public hearing. Within a few minutes, Dominic Kardisco with Drake Loeb, the Planning Board Attorney, will be speaking to you on the public hearing and also the agenda before us this evening. I'd like to take the time now to call out for a roll call vote, starting with John Ward.
Present.
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 At this time, we have, we're being represented by our consultants, and I would ask that they introduce themselves.
Dominic Kardisco, Planning Board Attorney.
Pat Hines with Magoi Hauser and Etzel Consulting Engineers.
Ken Worsted, Creighton Men in Engineering, traffic consultant.
Okay. And we'll be now turning the meeting over to Pat Hines.
Yeah, Ken, were you able to put a flag up? There we go. Like the stall is joining the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Which is standing.
One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dominic Kardisco, Planning Board Attorney. Can you speak to all of us on tonight's meeting?
Well, first, yes, thank you, Chairman. It's my privilege to, you know, be helping to facilitate the planning board to continue providing government services during this time. This meeting is being held consistent with the governor's executive orders. First of all, there's been several. And obviously, we're in the middle of this pandemic, and so we are complying with the social distancing requirements. But we're also mindful of and compliant with the restrictions that are in place as a result of Governor Cuomo's executive orders. And pursuant to the executive orders, they has allowed what has not been allowed before in New York, which is for meetings to occur virtually, such as this one, and also to allow public hearings to continue even without any in-person attendance. And so as a result, this meeting has been convened via Zoom. And so obviously, people that are participating via the Zoom app can see the meeting and also see the materials that are going to be discussed at this meeting. There are two public hearings that are scheduled for tonight, and we'll get to those in the next order. As far as the public hearings are concerned, what we are going to do is going to allow members of the public who are attending tonight during the Zoom meeting, whether or not they're doing so by video conference or by phone, to provide any comments that we have regarding the public hearing portion of the meeting. The Planning Board typically does not allow comments from the public on non-public hearing items. So what our plan to do is is to mute people that are not presenting to the board, and then we will unmute them at the time of the public hearings and to see whether or not there are any comments. And so there will also be additional opportunity for comments to be made for those who can't participate during the Zoom meeting or during this time. And so as I mentioned earlier, this meeting's being recorded, and the video of this meeting will be posted on YouTube and a link provided to the town for that. And also, the transcript of this meeting will be posted on the town's website. And so it is our intention to post that transcript as soon as it's available. And once the transcript is posted, we are providing up to 10 days for written public comment that will be sent to the Town Planning Board Chairman and for consideration by the board. So with that said, that complies, in my opinion and my recommendation to the board, fully with the governor's executive orders and allows the board to continue to provide governmental services during the pandemic.
Dominic, thank you for that introduction. At this point, the first item of business is BJ's Wholesale Club - Newburgh. It's located on New York State Route 17K in Autobahn Place. It's in an IB zone. It's being represented by Mazer Consulting. It's before us tonight for a public hearing on the, on ARB and signage. And at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Ken Memmerich to read the notice of hearing.
Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that the Planning Board of the Town of Newburgh, Orange County, New York, will hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 276 of the town law and in on the application of BJ's Wholesale Club, Newburgh Signage slash ARB Project 2019-7. The proposed BJ's Wholesale Club project consists of a 90,000 plus or minus square foot wholesale club, associated gas filling station, tire auto shop, propane filling station, customer pickup areas. The project is located on a 15 plus or minus acre parcel of property located on several lots, including Section 97, Block 2, Lot 27.32, 44, 46.2, and 45. The project has received conditional final approval from the Planning Board for the site plan mixed-use shopping center. The project is before the board now to complete architectural review and special use for an electronic sign message board in accordance with Section 185-14 and 14.1. The electronic message board will be located along New York State Route 17K frontage and be utilized to advertise the various uses in the mixed-use shopping center. A public hearing will be held on the 16th day of April 2020 at 7:00 PM, and which all time interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard. Due to public health and safety concerns concerning COVID-19, the Planning Board will not be meeting in person. In accordance with the government's executive order 202.1, the April 16th, 2020 Planning Board meeting will be held by a televideo conference, and the transcript will be posted on the town's website at a later date. The public will have the opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and provide comments either during the meeting or by mail or email up to 10 days following the posting of the transcript in the town's website. The public can watch the meeting via Zoom. The Zoom app must first be downloaded and installed on smartphones, tablets, or computers using www.zoom.us. Zoom teleconference meeting link is HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash US04WEB dot Z O O N dot U S slash J slash 562570851. Telephone dial in only plus 1-929-2056099. Meeting ID 562570851. Online meeting materials, HTTP colon forward slash forward slash WWW.TownOfNewburgh.org forward slash CN forward slash meetings. Comments may be sent by mail to the address above or preferably by email to planningboard@townofnewburgh.org. Comments must be received no later than 10 days following the posting of the transcript on the town's website dated 3 April 2020.
Thank you, Ken Memmerich. At this point in the meeting, the Mazer Consulting will be making a presentation before the board and the public also. There'll be dialogue between the Planning Board members, our consultants, and Mazer Consulting. And it will reach a point in time where that portion will come to a partial end, and we'll turn the meeting over to Planning Board Attorney Dominic Kardisco, who will then reach out to the public as far as comments. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Andrew Featherson, a Mazer consultant, to begin discussing the application before us this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I, I shrunk down the signage application down to four sheets, so it would be easy to put on the presentation. Ken, you probably have it those, yeah, that site plan first would be great. So we're talking about up at the top of the screen that sign number 11 is the one sign that we're speaking about. You could see on that plan that it's set back 29 feet from the property line, and it's probably about 60 feet from the edge of the pavement. That is the sign that we're speaking about. That's the electronic sign, the pylon sign. Could you go to that detail for that sign, Ken? So that's the detail for the sign. Total height, 29 feet. Total width, 26 feet. The actual sign panel will be 17 feet in height, standing on a three-foot diameter stone column that's 12 foot high. That's about all I have on that, John.
Thank you. At this point, I'll start with John Ward, Planning Board member. Any comments, John?
I think it looks very nice. It's, it's very good. Thank you.
Dave Dominic?
No, I agree with John. I think the signs come out nice. It's going to really make that area look attractive and professional looking. No additional comments.
Thank you. Cliff Brown?
I agree with how the sign looks. Also, just so note, we did cover all the technical information about the, the diming and the lightness, how frequent, how frequently it could be changed if they wanted to. So we've covered all that, and I'm in full agreement with it.
Okay. No comment at this point. Ken Memmerich, Planning Board member?
I have no questions, John.
Stephanie DeLuca?
Um, no, it looks very nice. Very nice. I like the stone pillar. It looks, it looks very good.
Okay, at this point, we'll turn it over to Pat Hines.
John?
John? Oh, you are here now, Frank. I didn't realize you were here. Thank you.
I'm here.
Frank Gallant?
On the sign, is it, is it always going to be like Barton's and BJ's and Salisbury? Or does, anytime does the BJ's get big and the Barton's, you know, there's a rotator? Is it always, that's how it's going to be like right there?
The, the Barton portion, the BJ's portion, and the bank portion are static. This center is the electronic portion.
Okay, looks good. I like it. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't realize you had joined the meeting. It's, it's a new experience. And then we'll continue, thank you, to Pat Hines with Magoi Hauser and Etzel. Pat, can you speak for us?
Sure. The, the sign is here for approval under Section 185-14 and 14.1. The electronic signs are considered special uses under those sections of the code, which require the Planning Board approval as well as the public hearing that we're having for that sign. We did discuss the signage at the previous Planning Board meeting when we were all together, and a presentation was made by the applicant's representative. We had requested through my office and Jerry Canfield's office an updated site plan coordinated with the signage plan, and that has been submitted. The site plan as stamped depicts the sign as proposed on the site plan that we previously reviewed. The project is also before the board tonight for ARB approval for the other signs, which the board has previously reviewed on the site. The one exception to that is the canopy signs over the gasoline fueling island have been removed from the application at this point as those may require submission to the zoning board of appeals because those signage sections 185-14 and 14.1, as they were adopted, do not address signage on the gasoline canopy. So that portion of the project being indicated on the screen now, those signs have been removed from the application. The rest of the signage shown on that site plan and previously reviewed by the board are in this application now and were part of the board's meeting when we previously met back in March, early March. We don't have any, any comments.
Jerry Canfield, are you with us this evening? Okay. Any additional comments from Planning Board members?
No.
No, all good.
At this point, we'll turn the meeting over to Dominic Kardisco, Planning Board Attorney. Dominic?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Pat mentioned, this application is a special permit application for the signage, and as a result, is required this public hearing. And so with your permission, I would like to unmute other members of the meeting to solicit to their public comment.
Please, thank you, Dominic.
So I think, so this is all new for us as far as process. So I'm going to try something by unmuting everyone. And if anyone in particular has public comment, if you would please identify yourself so that we can make sure that we have your information down.
Okay, just while you identify yourself, if you could give us your name for the stenographer as well as your address to give the board your perspective on the project.
And if possible, can you please spell your name? Thank you.
Is there any member of the public here that wishes to comment on the public hearing for the BJ's electronic sign?
Hey, Dominic. I'm still seeing muted mics. I don't know if that is on your end or their end.
They can unmute on their end. I've given them the authority to unmute, but they would have to unmute themselves. I can't unmute their mic from here, but they, they can unmute themselves at this point. And I do see that there are a couple of people who have called into the meeting as well. They're not muted. At this point, I don't see anyone identifying themselves that's having any comments on, on this particular public hearing.
Okay, at this point, let the minute show that we have not received any comments from the public and that I will make the motion to close the public hearing. And Dominic Kardisco, one more time, as after we close the public hearing, I'll ask you to speak. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Okay, I need to hear from one person.
Frank Gallant, close the public hearing.
So the motion from Frank Gallant, close the public hearing. I believe I have a second from Dominic Kardisco, excuse me, Dave Dominic?
That's great, John.
Thank you. I'll start with a roll call vote with John Ward.
Aye.
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 Let the record show that the Planning Board is in agreement to close the public hearing. And I'll have Dave, excuse me, Dominic Kardisco, speak to all of us and the public as to what the next steps are.
Yes, thank you. So the public hearing has been closed, but written comments will be accepted for up to 10 days following the posting of the transcript of this meeting on the town's website. So as soon as that transcript is posted, there will begin a 10-day clock for submission of written comments. And written comments can be sent to the address in the notice or to the email that was also provided in the notice, which will also be included in the transcript as well as the video for this meeting, which will be posted on YouTube.
Thank you.
Do we want to indicate that the transcript is anticipated on or about to be posted on or about the 22nd, I believe?
I didn't want to put any pressure on Michelle.
Yes, that's fine. The 22nd is good for me.
That's why I gave it the honor about as well.
Thanks, Pat.
Yes, and, and just, just so that we're all clear, if, if that is the case, and we certainly are endeavoring to make that happen, thank you, Michelle. And if that is provided, then the board could consider any written comments at its next meeting, which would be May 7th, and assumingly could take action at that time if it so chooses and everything is in order.
Thank you all. Andrew Featherson at Mazer Consulting, thank you. And we'll now prepare ourselves for the second item of business. We'll take a moment to prepare ourselves.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Have a safe trip. Our second item of business this evening is Donnelly-Lesley Road Subdivision. It's on, let me put on my glasses. Enough guessing. 67 Leslie Road. It's an R2 zone. It's a public hearing on a three-lot subdivision. It's being represented by engineering and surveying properties. I believe that'll be Ross Winglewitz. And at this point, one more time, I'm going to turn the Planning Board Attorney, Dominic Kardisco, for those who may have tuned in later to explain the procedure for this public hearing. Dominic?
Thank you, thank you, John. I'm not sure I can be as eloquent as I was last time around. But as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that this public hearing is being conducted consistent with the governor's executive orders that require New York to be on pause, but is allowing for certain activities to continue, including board meetings, municipal board meetings to occur via video conference. And so as a result, this public hearing is being conducted via Zoom. Will also, the recording of this meeting will be posted on YouTube following the meeting, and then a transcript of the meeting will also be posted on the town's website. And that anyone who wishes to comment will have an opportunity to comment during this meeting, but may also submit written comments to the board for their consideration up to 10 days following the posting of the transcript.
Thank you, Dominic. At this point, we'll turn the meeting over to Ken Memmerich, Planning Board member, to read the notice of hearing.
Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that the Planning Board of the Town of Newburgh, Orange County, New York, will hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 276 of the town law and on the application of Donnelly-Lesley Road Subdivision, Project 2020-01, where a three-lot subdivision on Leslie Road from Newburgh designated on Town Tax Maps as Section 26, Lot 6, Lot 25. The project proposes a three-lot subdivision of a parcel which contains one existing single-family residence. Lots are proposed to be serviced by onsite septic and public water. One of the lots will be served by an existing private driveway, which will require approval to become a common driveway serving three lots total. Project is located in the town's R2 zone. Public hearing will be held on the 16th day of April 2020 at 7:00 PM, at which time all interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard. Due to public health and safety concerns relative to COVID-19, the Planning Board will not be meeting in person. In accordance with the governor's executive order 202.1, the April 16th, 2020 Planning Board meeting will be held by a video conference, and a transcript will be posted on the town's website at a later date. The public will have the opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and provide comments either during the meeting or by mail or email up to 10 days following the posting of the transcript on the town's website. The public can watch the meeting via Zoom. Zoom app must be first, must first be downloaded and installed on smartphones, tablets, or computers from www.zoom.us. Video teleconference meeting link, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash US04WEB dot zoom dot U S slash J slash 562570851. Telephone dial in, dial in only 1-929-2056099. Meeting ID 562570851. Online meeting materials, HTTP colon forward slash forward slash WWW.TownOfNewburgh.org forward slash CN forward slash meetings. Comments may be sent by mail to the address above or preferably by email to planningboard@townofnewburgh.org. Comments must be received no later than 10 days following the posting of the transcript on the town's website dated 3 April 2020.
Thank you, Ken Memmerich. At this point in the meeting, we'll turn it over to the representatives, engineering and surveying properties, to discuss the three-lot subdivision before us for a public hearing this evening.
Good evening. For the record, Ross Winglewitz with Engineering and Surveying Properties. First and foremost, I wanted to thank the board for pulling this together and moving business forward like you've done. I've been going to meetings for 30 years, probably two nights a week. I've been married for 27 years, and I think if we didn't have this tonight, I may not make 28. So I appreciate it very much. This evening, up here representing Louis Donnelly for his proposed three-lot subdivision. I think Louis is online as well. As the notice says, the property is on Leslie Road. It is opposite Kettle Court. It's on the south side of Leslie Road and contains a common drive, which is also a named road in the town called Fallview Drive. There are three lots that are proposed. One is existing. So there are actually two new lots. The one existing house will be on Lot 1. That lot is about 60,000 square feet. Lot 2 is a proposed home on a new lot, approximately 25,000 square feet in size. That lot has access directly to Leslie Road. And in the rear of Lot 1 and 2 is Lot 3, approximately 33,000 square feet. That lot is proposed to have access via Fallview Drive. Each of the lots will be serviced by individual, no, excuse me, by septic systems and public water. The septic actually for Lot 1 is currently near the property line between Lot 1 and The septic actually for Lot 1 is currently near the property line between Lot 1 and Lot 2. So, a new septic is being proposed behind the house of the existing residents. The soil testing has been completed. Per test were between 6 and 34 minutes. The designs have been completed and reviewed by the town. Each will be a four-bedroom residence. I think that's all I have, John.
Thank you, Ross. At this point in the meeting, we'll first turn to Planning Board members for any comments. We'll start with John Ward.
Right this time, no comments.
Thank you. Dave Dominic?
Dominic, no comments at this time.
Cliff Brown?
Nothing at this time, John.
I have one comment, and that's for Pat Hines with Maguihousen et al. Pat, have we received comments back from the Town Highway Department?
Sorry, I was muted there. We have not received comments from the Highway Department to date. We did request them. Unless, Ross, did you receive those from Mark Aller?
I did not. I know that Lou did meet with the Highway Department out there to review the existing Fallview Drive and the proposed driveway access for Lot 2.
Yeah. Donnelly. Hello?
Go ahead, speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yes, I know. My name is Louis Donnelly. I did meet with the Highway Superintendent. He came out. We did a site visit together and a walkthrough. And he had no problems whatsoever with the access points for the proposed subdivision.
Okay, then we'll request that Ross Winglowitz make contact with the head of the Highway Department for the Town of Newburgh and to receive a written letter for records confirming what was just mentioned.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, now I'll turn, I'll turn back to Ken Memmerich. Ken, any comments?
No, I have no comments.
Stephanie DeLuca?
No, no comments at this time.
Frank Galley?
No comments, John.
Thank you. We'll turn the meeting now to Pat Hines with Maguihousen et al. Pat?
Yeah, we've reviewed the project in several submissions. We had commented on the subsurface sanitary sewer disposal systems, and the applicant's representative have revised the plans pursuant to our comments. The access to the rear lot is via a common driveway, and I believe it's Lot 3. There are two existing residents that use that common driveway in an easement area. In the Town of Newburgh, two lots are allowed to use a little common driveway, and you can get an additional third lot if you can get approval from the Town Board. So, Town Board approval for three lots on that common driveway is required. And that needs to come from the Town Board. I know the applicants need to pursue that. Typically, the Town Board requests comments from the jurisdictional fire department that serves the parcels in question. That common driveway access and maintenance agreement will need to be reviewed by Dominic Cudisco, and all persons accessing that road will have to be party to that common driveway access and maintenance agreement. There are utility easements required for the water lines to serve various lots as well as electrical utilities that are crossing the existing lots. All those utility easements will need to be reviewed to the satisfaction of the Planning Board Attorney. We need a stamped survey map prior to the final plans being signed. My last comment was that a public hearing is required, and we're having that public hearing tonight. And the additional comment that sign off from the Highway Superintendent for the driveway locations will be required. But those are outstanding comments. There are mostly procedural matters. Our technical issues regarding water and sewer have been previously addressed.
Let me say that I erred in thinking through my comment pad. I happened to be in the office. I pulled the file, and I like to read into the records. I have an email address to Johnny with Suton from Kathy from the Highway Department dated Monday, March 2, 2020, 3:15 PM, to Johnny with Suton, subject, Donnelly-Lesley Road subdivision. John, the Town of Newburgh Highway Department does not have an issue with a third party, excuse me, on a common driveway, for this is a private road. Thanks, Mark. Pat, clear comment on that?
You know, that's fine. Apparently, that confirms the applicant, the owner of the property's representation that he did meet with the Highway Superintendent.
I apologize for being careless. At this point, we'll turn the meeting over to Dominic Cudisco, Planning Board Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned earlier, that this public hearing is being conducted via Zoom. And so, anyone that is present during this Zoom video or teleconference will have the opportunity to comment now. But assuming that the board closes the public hearing, that there will also be a 10-day period where they could comment following the submission, excuse me, following the posting of the transcript of this meeting. And at that said, I have unmuted, or given everyone the opportunity to unmute themselves. And so, I would ask at this point if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on the Donnelly-Lesley subdivision. Once again, if there are any members of the public, if you would unmute yourself and identify yourself, providing your name, so that we could make sure that we have correct information for public comment, now would be the time.
Dominic, is it straightforward if you're calling in by phone on how to unmute?
It, let's see. So, I've just unmuted the members that had called in by phone. Is there anyone here that is calling in by phone that wishes to comment on the Donnelly-Lesley subdivision? Yeah. There are only two members that called in by phone, and so, they were just unmuted and did not respond.
Thank you. Following the procedures of a Zoom meeting, we opened the meeting up to the public for comment. We have not received any comment from the public at this time. So, I would ask for someone to make a motion to close the public hearing on the Donnelly-Lesley Road three-lot subdivision.
So.
Second.
I have a motion by John Ward. I have a second by Stephanie DeLuca. May I please have a roll call vote, starting with John Ward?
Aye.
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 Let the record show that the Planning Board approved the closing of the public hearing for a three-lot subdivision for Donnelly on Leslie Road. And one more time, we'll ask Dominic Cudisco to speak on what's, what'll occur in the course of the next several days.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, to clarify, the stenographer, Michelle Conero, is preparing a transcript of this meeting. Once that written transcript is finalized, it will be posted on the town's website with instructions for submitting written comments, and those written comments will be accepted for up to 10 days following the posting of the transcript. Thereafter, the board at its next meeting, so if it so chooses, and assuming that all things are in order, the board could consider those public comments at that time.
Thank you, Dominic. The next agenda item that we have this evening, item number three, is the Young subdivision. It's a four-lot subdivision located on 50 Millhouse Road in an AR zone. And it's being represented by engineering and surveying properties. And at this point in the meeting, we'll turn it over to a representative of that company. Thank you.
Good evening. Jay Samuelson, Engineering Properties. We were asked before you in early March to initially present the project. This one is very unique as it consists of three tax parcels that are split by the Town of Newburgh, Town of Marlboro, Orange County, Ulster County line. There's currently two existing residents, which we show on Proposed Lots 2 and Lots 3. We're proposing to subdivide it into a total of four proposed lots, with both of the new dwellings being located in the Town of Marlboro. We have completed all the soil testing for these subsurface septic systems. We did attempt to, and did have scheduled a joint soil inspection with the Ulster County Health Department that due to the COVID crisis, they were unable to attend. They did ask us to document the test holes with photos and pictures and send them the results, and they would determine at a later date if that was going to be acceptable for their joint inspection, or they would request to do it again. That answer has yet to be determined. Two other things that we need to discuss are archaeological study. The study, the field work has been complete, and the report is being written as we speak. Hopefully, it'll be done early next week to be able to submit back to SHPO. I did speak with the archaeologists today. He said he did not find anything, and he will be issuing a letter or a report for Phase 1, Phase 1B with no impact and no further recommendation. Regarding the bald eagle that came up with the DEC hit, we had a letter from our environmental consultant, Pete Torvison, discussing the habitat of the bald eagle and the location of the property in the large-known eagle's nest and the location of the river. And the summary of the letter states that due to the significant distance from the river, that there should, there will be no impacts to the bald eagle based on this project. That letter is being submitted to the DEC for their concurrence in that recommendation. We have been in front of the Town of Marlboro as well. We will be meeting with them again next Monday. As you know, they have declared their intent for lead agency as all of the new proposed lots and proposed development is within the Town of Marlboro. That's all I have, John.
Jay, thank you. At this point in the meeting, I'll turn it to Pat Hines with Maguihousen et al.
Yes, our comments mirror what Jay Samuelson had just said previously, Lot 4, when it was submitted. On the left side of the screen, I had a note that it was not for building purposes at this time. That has been revised to show a house well in septic, all of which are located in the Town of Marlboro. And that was due to the fact that the lot was less than five acres in size, so it was considered a realty subdivision lot. The Town of Marlboro did declare its intent for lead agency and circulated that to other interested and involved agencies. That was circulated on March 8. So, it would have timed out, but we would request the Town of Newburgh state that they have no interest in serving as lead agency and defer to the Town of Marlboro due to the circumstances that we are currently experiencing. I don't know if we want to just go with the timed out, but an affirmative acknowledgment of that would be helpful. As Jay Samuelson identified, the Town of Marlboro is taking up this matter in a similar form as this on Monday, the 20th, at which time, they will most likely declare themselves lead agency and may be in a position to make a secret determination. But we have not received the two outstanding issues are the bald eagle habitat issue that was identified in the EAF and the archeologically sensitive nature of the site due to the Gomez Millhouse being in close proximity. So, those are two outstanding environmental issues that need to be addressed, and those were identified in the long-form EAF that was submitted. We discussed earlier with Dominic Cudisco, a means to permanently connect those parcels of property which span the two municipal lines as well as the two county lines. There's always a concern that a tax sale issue could arise, or some other sale of those properties could happen on either side of those town lines and county lines, as they will get different tax bills, and ours will be given separate tax map numbers. So, a legal mechanism to permanently bind three of those lots that have that issue will be required. This board is required to have a public hearing, as well as the Town of Marlboro, as you were both addressing a subdivision within your jurisdictions. I know that Jay Samuelson's office had requested if those could be coordinated, but I don't know if that'll happen as the meetings for both of the reviewing boards are on separate nights. So, most likely, separate public hearings will be required. The Town of Newburgh is not in a position to schedule that public hearing, as you don't do that until a secret determination has been made by the lead agency, in this case, the Town of Marlboro. Those are the issues that we have on the front side.
Listening and following the recommendation from Pat Hines, starting with John Ward, the Town of Newburgh Planning Board affirms that the Town of Marlboro will be the lead agency. John Ward?
Yes, aye. What you called?
Dave Dominic?
John?
Aye, yeah, okay. Myself, yes. Stephanie, Ken Memmerich?
Yes.
Stephanie DeLuca?
Yes.
Frank Galley?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, does any of the Planning Board members have any comments on the Young subdivision? Please speak forward.
I do, John. Orange County Planning Board, they, they had a question in reference to a driveway. You know which one I'm talking about?
Yeah, they had a question. They had mentioned the driveways, both of which are located in Ulster County and are being reviewed by the Town of Marlboro Highway Superintendent. But there are two driveways for Lots 3 and 4 that enter relatively close to each other. So, Orange County Planning had suggested that those possibly be a common driveway. I think that issue will be addressed by the Marlboro Highway Superintendent, as they're both located in Marlboro. And they'll take a look at that during their review process. Orange County Planning and their comment also addressed a septic system question that will be addressed by Ulster County during their review of the septic systems as well. So, they did grant a local determination, Orange County Planning, with those two suggestions. Ulster County Planning also reviewed the project and has identified the septic system separation distance to the County Health Department in Ulster County. So, those are being evaluated, both the Orange County comments and the Ulster County Planning comments.
Thank you very much.
John, I just have one clarification. It's Frank.
Frank Galley?
Yes, one clarification, Pat. Did, is this, did you say it was going to have two public hearings? One for Marlboro, one for the Town of Newburgh?
Yes, I believe, unless Dominic says otherwise, but the subdivision is occurring in both municipalities, in both counties. So, you will both, we've had this situation before in this same area, and actually, the maps were stamped by both Planning Boards and subsequently in each county.
Okay, thank you.
Dominic Cudisco, do you agree we will need to hold a public hearing?
Yes, you know, what's being asked of this board is subdivision approval for these properties. It's also triggering subdivision approval in Marlboro. And both boards are going to have to follow their procedures, including holding a public hearing for this subdivision.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments from the Planning Board members or consultants, then at this point, we wait to receive the information that Jay Samuelson had discussed earlier in this presentation. And at a later date, we'll schedule this for a Planning Board meeting, at which time, we may then be able to make a secret determination. And if all the ducks line up, declare a negative declaration and have a public hearing. And if all the ducks line up, declare negative declaration and have a public hearing, correct Dominic?
That would be correct with one clarification is that. Assuming that the town of Marlborough does. Not only have they declared themselves to be lead agency, but if they are in fact lead agency, then. This board would then rely on the negative declaration that would be adopted by the town of Marlborough.
I stand corrected. Thank you, Dominic. Okay, then, if there's no further discussion, we'll move on to the fourth item that's on our agenda this evening. Our fourth item is Dollar General. It's a initial appearance for a site plan. It's located on the southeast corner of Route 9W and North Hill Lane. It's in a B zone. And we'll be hearing this evening from Bowler Engineering, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Karen Majanowski from Bowler. And I represent HSC Baumville LLC, who is the applicant on this proposed project. We're here this evening to introduce this project to the board for the first time. As the chairman mentioned, it is a 2.1 plus or minus acre parcel located at the southeast corner of New York State Route 9W. And North Hill. Property is currently undeveloped. And is it the business zoning district? Developing to develop. 9100 plus or minus square foot Dollar General retail store. The store will face Route 9W. And will have access to North Hill Lane. As he requires and prefers to see. Access from a side street if available. That is what we have proposed here. The building is situated to meet the required minimum setbacks for the zoning code. And 30 parking spaces are proposed to accompany this for. Per the zoning, if we were to build out the full number of parking that would be required. We would be building 62 parking spaces here. And that amount of parking and asphalt is just not necessary for this particular user and tenant, which again is Dollar General. So that is one item we would like to review with the board this evening as we see the benefit of the additional green space. And landscape buffer to remain. Rather than doubling the size of the parking lot and asphalt that would most likely sit unused if we were to build that. The project is a great use for the site as it will have minimal impact for commercial use in the business district that is here. We did the wetlands investigation upfront as we had concerns here as to the extent of the wetlands. And we have shown that wetland delineation on our proposed plan. About half of the site is covered in wetlands. Which is why the site is laid out up at the corner as we've designed it here. There's a major drainage way from the New York State right of way. That discharges onto our site at the edge of the road and travels back. In an easterly direction and then north behind the building as it eventually heads towards North Hill Lane. With the scale and use of this proposed project, we are able to keep the project under one acre of land disturbance. Which, again, as I mentioned, I think is a great use for the site in the business district. As many businesses would not fit here due to the constraints that we're up against. We will connect to municipal water here as that is available. And are proposing a septic system between our parking lot and North Hill Lane. Historically, Dollar General uses about 100 gallons of water per day or less. Another reason why this site is a good use for this site. As that septic system is pretty small in nature. There's no food prep or other things that would call for a large water demand. We did receive a couple of letters from the consultants. And I see no major issues with addressing those items. I do want to review this layout with the planning board this evening. And the, the general layout and the parking in front of the store was mentioned. I think this layout is in line with the other commercial uses on this corridor. Directly adjacent to us and across the street with similar layouts. And again, we are being very sensitive to the wetlands on site. And keeping that green space buffer all around the project to the greatest extent possible. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Karen. That was a nice presentation. Let me start with the planning board members and then we'll introduce. Ken Worsted with Craig Manning and Ted Hines with Magooye Hauser-Netzl. I'd like to start with, if I may, John Ward, John?
Yes. Down along 9W where you have your parking there. We've been having sidewalks continue up 9W with the stone wall. Because you shouldn't, I don't know if that would be at a front yard, but. You have to be a certain distance with the parking there. So I'm asking you for a sidewalk and say a 24 inch. Stone wall along 9W there with some landscape.
John, when you say 24 inch, you mean 24 inches in height?
Hi, hi, sorry.
No, it's fine.
Hello.
Karen, would you like to respond to that now or wait till later time?
Whichever the board prefers. I'm writing everything down. If it's easier, I can address everything at the end.
Okay.
Okay, fine, then we'll follow that.
Thank you.
Dave Dominik?
Thank you, John. Hi Karen, and welcome. Karen, when you, as we move forward with this project, I would like you to come back with a more. At the time that you see fit, more detailed landscape of the front of the project and for the entire area. We're really trying to push that, especially in the 9W corridor and to clean that area up. You know, you can get some ideas from, you know, look next door to the nursery school, down the street at Valero. Or even the bus station, you know, all those projects have started to come flourish and to really clean up that area. So as tagging on what John Ward said, the stone wall out front adds character, softens lines, just makes it look eye peeling. And then also, you know, not only for now, but to continue on with, you know. Landscape maintenance, you know, and keeping that area clean, neat, presentable. As you see what Ken put up on the screen there, just how the gas station did a combination of attractive landscaping. Trees, the sidewalks, as John mentioned, softened it, softened it with the split rail fence and then also. The stone wall really, really makes that area attractive. You look at it, that's a huge wall, but you don't see it as a big wall because of all these other. Additives that have softened that. It's, it's very professional and very attractive. So please take that into consideration.
Ken Worsted, for the records, the example that Dave Dominik was speaking of. What is that site?
Thank you.
Yep, that's the quick check site. You know, you can see in the same view here. We have Dollar General and just down the road, you know, probably 2,000 feet is the quick check. And just to the north, we have the daycare facility.
Thank you. Cliff Brown?
I'd like to just echo what John Ward and Dave Dominik shared. The 9W corridor is an area that, as a planning board, we've been encouraging that to be improved from a aesthetic standpoint. And what can be, whatever can be done there would be appreciated. And again, we would like to continue the guidelines that we have in place for this type of activity to be implemented. Thank you.
I have no comments at this time. Ken Memmerick?
I also agree with what everybody else has been saying as far as the treatment of sidewalks and stone walls and landscaping. I also wanted to comment about the parking. I agree that it's much better to have reduced parking at this site. And I think Ken Worsted's analysis reinforces the fact that you don't need the full amount of parking for the site.
Thank you. Stephanie DeLuca?
Yeah, I was, just want to echo what everyone else has been saying in regards to just the aesthetics on it. On, along the front and also the parking too. I was wondering. About the number of parking spaces and I was glad that there may be a consideration for it being reduced. I was just wondering about traffic in and out along the side there too with the, with the nursery school, but that doesn't. It doesn't look as if it's going to be a problem. So it looks good otherwise.
Thank you, Stephanie. Frank Gally?
Ken Worsted, I just have one question on when they pull out of the Dollar General site and they turn, make a left to go to 9W. Of course, to exit and get back out. How many cars roughly can you stack up there? Two or three?
I'd say probably two or three. That sounds about right. If I take, if I take a parking lot stall here. And compare that to, you know, this area. Here's kind of the edge of the white line right here. So let's say, you know, that's one car, you know, two cars, you know, somewhere right in here. So you could probably get a third car, you know, pulling out, you know, stacked here. And that's probably your limit before another car comes out of Dollar General and would block the North Hill direction.
Okay, I just then also, I just want to echo the Dave Dominik and John Ward and everyone else as far as the. How we're trying to clean up 9W and make it look presentable to the town. And I think we should move forward and just hopefully you'll take our comments, put them to use and thank you.
Okay, Ken Worsted, if you would continue somewhat with your original study of the. Property that we're discussing, Dollar General and traffic.
Sure, we had looked at the project plans and also the site, you know, based on maps and available information. And we think that DOT will look favorably on the proposed access. It being on the corner of a state highway and a side street. I think DOT will like that the access is directly from the side street and not directly from Route 9W. We had talked about the sidewalk. Obviously, we have two projects to the south. That had come online pretty close to each other. And so the planning board had requested that they begin a sidewalk in this corridor. And that extended to the, the south end of this neighborhood. So I think the board would, obviously you've heard from a couple of members about extending or providing it within this section of it. I would note that the. The facility, I guess it's the monument, Garden Center to the south. Did appear to have a for sale sign on it. So perhaps that property will be up for redevelopment at some point. And potentially, that'll be an aspect that we can look to, to continue. You know, a sidewalk from the properties to the south across the Dollar General. We had looked at the ITE trip generation for this size store. And without taking into account any pass by trips, we had estimated that the morning peak hour would be about 30 trips. So not a sizable amount. And in the afternoon, we had estimated that the site generate about 64 trips. Some of that's going to be coming in and out, you know, so it's probably about a 50 50 split. And if you were to take account, you know, some percentage. Of drivers will be driving by the site, perhaps on their way home from work. They might stop and pick some stuff up, you know, at the store en route. That'll discount some of that traffic. So while 64 trips might come in and out of the site. Some of that traffic is going to originate on Route 9W. We had looked at the truck attorney movements provided on the plan. And we had noted that there was a couple of areas here. Namely around the corners where the tractor trailer is going to off track a little bit. So there may be some curbing or some adjustments to those ready to accommodate that. The truck shown is a WB 50, so it's not the type of truck that you'll find. You'll, you'll find it on the interstate, but this is one of the smaller trucks. So I would just caution the applicant about having a warehouse distribution sized truck, you know, a WB 63 or 67. Coming into the site and trying to navigate into there. If, if a larger truck does come in, obviously they're going to have more challenges navigating around. Some particular corners, you know, through here and it'll be more challenging for them to access the property. As a couple of people had mentioned, the parking. The zoning had called for 62 spaces for the size of retail while there's 30 spaces being proposed. We had also looked at some IT parking generation information. And relative to the size store, we had estimated that the average number of spaces needed. Were probably going to be around 11 spaces. Now, parking demand obviously fluctuates. Certain times of the day, certain times of the year, the demand is going to increase. So if we were to look at the 85th percentile, that means 85% of all the parking demand will fit within this. This footprint, we'd be looking at 17 spaces. So even accounting for some peaking characteristics at 17. The 30 spaces provided will be sufficient for that. So in general, obviously there's probably going to be some spaces that get lost if there's a, you know, an inch of snow. People aren't going to be able to see where those lines are. They might park over the line. So there may be some spaces that are lost due to that. So we think the 30 spaces is going to be adequate for typical operations. And then we'll just note that similar with other sites in the town. They double parking space stripes. Similar to the Mavis Tire, the new Mavis Tire in Buffalo Wild Wings over on Route 300. So any of the details relative to striping should be updated to reflect that. And that was the extent of my comments.
Thank you, Ken. Pat Hines with Magooye Hauser-Netzl?
Yeah, we look at the parking as well. The town code has a, a parking calculation for retail. The code allows flexibility and utilizing the ITE manual where we don't have. A use corresponding to a, to a number of parking spaces. In this case, the code would require 62 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing 30. I think we've heard from Ken and others that that is adequate. But because the 62 is required by code, it will require a referral to the zoning board of appeals. For the reduction in parking. I think the applicant and Ken have made the case for the zoning board application. And that should be addressed. So the board's action tonight, among any other items, is a potential referral to the ZBA for the parking. I just noted that the long form EAF appeared to be missing the, the second page or the last page that identifies the mapping. If it was filled out on the DEC website, the EAF identifies potential habitat for the Indiana bat. And the two sturgeon species in the Hudson River. I don't believe there'll be any impact to the Hudson River Sturgeon. But the Indiana bat should be addressed on the site. It also interesting identifies it as an archeologically sensitive area. And that'll need to be addressed through the secret process. I think we should delay declaring lead agency until the applicant returns back from the ZBA. So that the ZBA can make a decision independent of the planning board. The project will require submission to DOT and Orange County Planning. The project will require submission to DOT and Orange County Planning once we get more detailed plans. The bulk table in accordance with Section 185, 184B, along state highways has a 60 foot front yard. I believe the building meets that. It just needs to have the bulk table for that front yard to address the 60 feet. The, we discussed the project parking in the front yard. The town of Newburgh has design guidelines which recommend against parking in the front yard setbacks. However, the planning board often considers mitigation, including the discussed stone walls and landscaping that can be implemented to mitigate the parking in the front yard. So if you take a look at those design guidelines and some of the other projects that we just looked at along the corridor, the town planning board sees the development along this corridor as an opportunity to, for lack of a better term, clean up this state highway corridor. We discussed the location of the access drive and the queuing. Frank Galley had mentioned the queuing coming out of the site. I'm going to defer to Ken Worster on that. But vehicles leaving the proposed site as well as the daycare could rapidly queue in the intersection where someone pulling out of your site may block traffic coming into the residential area. Future plans should address water and sewer services to the site. The building will be required to be sprinkler. The town of Newburgh has its a more stringent sprinkler ordinance than the New York State Building Code. So a sprinkler system for the building will be required. And certain details are required that I can provide the applicant's representative regarding that sprinkler system. Will we need a site grading plan and finished floor elevations? The wetland delineation has been provided on the plan. However, we would request that be submitted to the board, the actual delineation, to complete the board's file and review under SEACER. The amount of wetland fill and any impacts to the wetland should be specifically identified. I see the southeast corner of the building is encroaching on the wetlands as well as some of the parking on the southern portion of the city. So that wetland area and the impact should be identified. Any retaining walls in excess of four feet will require a building permit and stamp design plans. I don't know the height as we don't have the grading plan. But for the board's reference, there are extensive retaining walls on the south and easterly side of the site having to do with reducing wetland impacts and taking advantage of the, what usable area is on the site. Stormwater management, I know the applicant's representative mentioned they're under an acre disturbance. The town of Newburgh Stormwater Management Regulations are more stringent than the DEC regulations. So a stormwater management plan and report will be required for this site as if it was over an acre in size because the reduction in the town of Newburgh's amount of disturbance which requires a stormwater management plan. A detail of the monument sign, I did notice that the monument sign is located between two parking spaces. So I'm assuming that the, the height of that sign will have to be addressed such that cars parked in those parking spaces won't impact the location of that sign, or the applicant may want to consider moving the sign closer to the intersection. We'll leave that up to them. It's just something I noticed. There are extensive easements on the site. I'm very interested in those. One of the easements is 250 feet from 9W in an easterly direction. And there's an 80 foot easement along the portion of the property as well. And then a 30 foot easement along North Hill Road. So we need to have information pertaining to those easements and submitted for the planning board's attorney review so that we can determine what impacts those easements have on the development, if any. And if there's any restrictions of development associated with those easements. But I don't have the information on that to comment yet, but we will need those legal documents. That's the status of our review right now.
Karen, do you want to take the time now to comment on these comments? Or do you want to address the comments and then when we see you for the next visit? Well, you'll be prepared with your revised maps?
Mr. Chairman, before we turn it over back to the applicant, I did want to let you know that Karen Orent just was able to join. So she was able to rush here from her meeting in tuxedo.
All right, thank, thank you, Karen. At this point, I'll turn to Karen from Boulder Engineering.
Thank you. I will address the, the comments that were made this evening and some of the points from the consultants as well. In regards to the frontage of the site, we have left area for landscaping and we do intend to develop that design further. Now that the board has seen the general layout this evening, we will proceed in that direction. As it sounds like everyone is generally on board with this general layout. So we will provide those landscaping plans that addresses the streetscape. As far as the sidewalk, we can look into that further. There is no existing sidewalk in this area to connect to. And if you take a look at the plan we're on now, there's a line with, almost looks like dots coming off the back of it, which is guide rail right along the edge of Route 9W, starting directly in front of our monument sign. Yep, that's it there. There's a pretty steep drop off there. So this, this site sits quite a bit lower than the road. So it might present itself a little bit differently than some of the other sites in the corridor. I think landscaping could still be beneficial in that area. But it is unique in that it does sit a lot lower and until sidewalks are built to connect to it, it's quite difficult for pedestrians there due to that significant grade change. As far as the parking, it's good to hear that everyone is generally acceptable of the lesser parking spaces. Our question was if the planning board has the authority to waive that as part of this process. And if not, then we would seek the variance if required with your recommendation to the zoning board. The, in regards to the tractor trailer, Dollar General typically uses a WB 62 or WB 67. In some instances, and we're starting to see this, they go to using a WB 50 and our client, the developer, has to go to the Dollar General, who's their tenant, for approval for a smaller truck to put this store on that route with the WB 50. So all those discussions have occurred and Dollar General has approved the use of the WB 50 for this store. And it is their plan to use that truck based on the layout and constraints we're dealing with here. We will reevaluate the turning movement and add curbing or additional width if necessary to the pavement. And lastly, I'll address the easements that showed up on the survey that was submitted. We are working on, with our surveyor, on preparing a revised survey that we will submit to the town. We've been working with our client extensively as utility easements pretty much cover this whole site. There's a white line parallel to Route 9W straight through the back of the site, about 250 feet, I believe it is. And we've been working with the power company on those easements to find out what they are. Are they still applicable? And the utility companies have agreed to remove those easements. And in exchange, asked for a 30 foot easement parallel to North Hill Lane as hatched an outline there exactly, which is an easement that will apply to the property. So no vertical elements within that easement. We pushed everything over to give them that very wide 30 feet on our property off of their overhead lines. So we will be submitting revised survey to document that. But I did want to address that this evening that many months went into working with the power company on that. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Karen. And I'm speaking to both Karens now. Karen Aron with Gala is our landscape architect. She just joined the meeting. At this point in the night, I would say that it's best that you two professionals try and find the time to connect with one another and discuss the landscaping and the visual improvements along the Route 9W corridor. I think that would benefit us all at this point in the evening. Yes, Dominic Cadisco, the planning board attorney, will speak to you shortly as far as preparing a letter to the ZBA for a area variance as it relates to the parking. And I think we also had discussed at our work session that the ZBA is in the process of coming online with a meeting similar to what we're having now. But in the interim to save time and move the project somewhat forward, Dominic, correct me if I'm misspeaking, that Karen with Boulder Engineering would start revising her plans for the next submission? Dominic, you want to join in on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, certainly the applicant could take advantage of this time to address comments that have been made to date. And tonight, this is their first appearance and as noted, it does require variance for the parking from the zoning board of appeals. You're absolutely correct. My understanding is, is that they are taking steps to hold their meetings virtually, but nothing has been announced yet. Nonetheless, you know, if the board is inclined, we could refer this matter to the zoning board of appeals and I'm prepared to write that letter if the board would so choose. Because as Pat had mentioned earlier, because the zoning board is involved and in order to avoid tying up the potential consideration of the, by the zoning board, I would recommend that you not circulate your intent for lead agency at this time. And that way, the zoning board can continue and undertake its own review solely as it relates to the variances and other environmental factors can be considered by this board in a coordinated review if and when the project returns from the ZBA.
Okay, at this point, I'll turn to the planning board members to hold them for their vote on having Dominic Cadisco, planning board attorney, prepare a referral letter to the zoning board of appeals. John Ward?
Aye.
Dave Dominic?
Aye.
Cliff Brown?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Ken Memmerich?
Yes.
Stephanie DeLuca?
Yes.
Frank Galley?
Yes, John. Also, I just, if we're going to go back around, I just have two questions or comments that I'd like to bring up. If you want to do that now or you want to?
No, we'll do that now.
First of all, Karen, on your next submission, maybe you could put, since there's so much wetlands on the property and stuff, where are you going to put snow storage or snow removal? I don't know. It's, it's not my expertise, but I don't know if it's legal to dump snow into a wetlands area on the property. So it looks like a pretty tight site. So I don't know if you have a specific area where you're going to put the snow if you get some big storms. And second part is going back to the sidewalk. We get a lot of push and shove when we recommend sidewalks. But if we didn't start somewhere, we'd never have any sidewalks. So as we start down 9W with Quick Check and all the rest as we keep going, we really highly recommend sidewalks. That's just my two comments.
Additional comments from any of the planning board members? Please speak forward.
Yes, John, Cliff, I was going to bring up the same comment with the sidewalks and that, yes, it may be difficult with the sloping on the, on the site. However, it's a thing that, in that corridor that we would really want to have done. And, and yes, it's got to start someplace and it may be a challenge, but I, it really has to be looked at very carefully. Thank you.
John?
John Ward?
Yes, and it's a New York State Highway. New York State's DOT is pushing sidewalks for pedestrian safety. So you can make a sidewalk work whatever elevation it's there. Believe me, it'll work one way or another. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay. All right then. At this point, we'll, we'll look forward to hearing back from you. And thank you.
We'll work on everything. In the meantime, we'll work for the zoning board referral and variance. Is it the board's preference to come back once we've obtained that variance or should we continue working concurrently?
I think we had discussed this at our work session and our attorney, Dominic Cadisco, had suggested that it would benefit both the applicant and the planning board if you were to continue working on the project and return because we don't have much of a choice right now with the ZBA and just to try and move projects along, Karen, please do your due diligence as far as the site plan. And we look forward to reviewing the project again. Correct, Dominic?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. It's certainly, it's the applicant's choice. And if they're prepared to move forward concurrently, there's, you know, review that can, can occur. You know, obviously, the planning board would not be in a position to consider any level of approval until, you know, the variances were obtained for the parking or, or adjustments were made. That said, yeah, I think it would be helpful and certainly would move the project faster through the process. But I proceeding concurrently.
Yeah, we, we do have that lead agency delay issue though, but so we'll have to work around that as well.
Yes.
Understood. We, we discussed that. Karen, are you, are you ready to move forward?
Absolutely.
All right. Nice to hear that. Positive word. Thank you for your time and again, work hard on this.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last item of business this evening, that's the agenda item I'm speaking of. We do have two board business items, but the agenda items, as we're listed one through five, our last item is the Polo Club. It's on Route 300 and Genie Drive. It's the initial submission of a draft supplemental DEIS. It's slow, it's in an R3 zone. And it's being represented by engineering and surveying properties. And at this point, we'll turn the meeting over to the representative.
Good evening, Ross. One of us here, I'm here with Jay. We're both working on the project. And also, Genie Weinberg is also with us this evening. We presented to the board, it was right around March 9th, a draft environmental, draft supplemental environmental impact statement along with a set of plans regarding further development of the property for the 242 apartments that were reviewed by the board mostly last year. We developed a scope for that part three, for the SEIS, prepared the document, submitted it. And we're here tonight to receive any comments the board may have.
Okay. I will start with Ken Worster. Both the internal circulation of the site and any impacts to the state road?
Thank you, John. We reviewed the SDIS, the scoping document as well as the material submitted by Ross's office. And we just had a few completion comments, namely under existing conditions. I think it'd be helpful to describe some of the general conditions of the roads that are out there. You know, what is the pavement classified as? Is it in good condition, poor? You know, fair? Also, under existing conditions, describing the traffic count, dates and times. Some of that information is, I think, available back in the appendix with the, the traffic study. But I think it'll be helpful just to have a, a couple of snips of those, that information up in the body of the document. Under the potential impacts, describing the amount of traffic generated by the proposed action. Again, that's buried in an appendix. describing the amount of traffic generated by the proposed action, again, that's buried in an appendix. I think it's in an appendix in the appendix with the traffic study. And then, lastly, a comparison of the different trips generated by the potential land uses there, one being the proposed action. The other was the approved project, which dates back to 2006 to 2008, sometime in that timeframe. The single-family residential. And Pat, you'll have to help me with the TND acronym, but the
Traditional Neighborhood Development, I believe.
That's it again, yep. Traditional neighborhood development concept. So if there's just a little bit of comparison between the traffic generated by those, I think it'll be helpful. Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Pat Hines. The Gleyhouser Nestle.
Yeah, we reviewed the document with regard to the scope and completeness. And I don't know how the board feels. We've generated some 41 comments regarding the the additional information that we believe should be incorporated into the document to make it complete for review. As well, our final comment noted that we were reviewing the SWIP. I have completed that SWIP review, and will be providing the applicants with the comments regarding the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. I'll leave it to the chairman whether they want to hit each of these comments, or I can hit some of the the major points. Some of them, some of them are minor cleanup, some of them are issues where I'm requesting some additional information. So would you, you want the Reader's Digest version, or all 41 of them, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Well, let's stick with 30 parking spaces and not go through 62. Yeah, let's hit upon the
Sure. The important ones. Yep. My comment number five, there was a reference to blasting in the project. This is the first time we heard reference to blasting. We would like to have that more fleshed out. We've had some of these multifamily projects run into bedrock after discovering it during construction phase, and we believe that the the blasting potential should be fleshed out additionally. The information regarding the surface discharge of the proposed sewage treatment plant, we believe that additional information regarding the receiving stream and potential impacts to that, as well as a more detailed description of the sewage treatment process, chlorination, de-chlor, the actual process itself should be fleshed out and additional information be provided. The section where the alternate sanitary sewer connection is identified, we believe more information regarding the routing of that sewer, an assessment of any impacts associated with that alternative being incorporated into the plan. Obviously, there's a, there's a, there's two alternatives, but we believe each of the alternatives should be fully addressed. The wetlands report should be incorporated as in the appendix. Right now, the appendix only contains a letter from the wetlands consultant, and some additional information regarding the wetland mitigation areas, including how you're going to access the wetland mitigation area. It's on the other side of the stream. So impacts associated with that. There's a comment about removing vegetation along the frontage for site distance, and the board extensively discussed the previous project that was before it regarding the maintenance of the existing vegetation and actually supplementing it for screening. For permits and approvals, the Orange County Health Department needs to be added as you're proposing hydrants. Discussion, there's a discussion regarding what's referred to as general public units, but the senior units are not included subsequent to that. That discussion should include the general public and the senior units. I think there should be some more emphasis on the senior housing owner's density and the zoning associated with that in the narrative report. The jurisdictional emergency services should be contacted regarding site access, knockbox, sentry lock, whatever proprietary products they're using, as well as any comments they have on the plan. I think the plan went to them once, and the letters from the jurisdictional emergency services, police, fire, ambulance should be incorporated into the document. I believe the fire department may have weighed in already. The the letter in the DEC section is the letter from the original Polo Club. We do have a more recent DEC screening letter that should be included based on our revised lead agency submission. There's some technical comments regarding the narrative regarding the SWIP and the five acre disturbance requirements. The water supply identifies that the raw water comes from the aqueduct tap and is only chlorinated. I believe that's a remnant of the previous report, because the town of Newburgh now has a water filter plant on the Catskill Aqueduct, so those portions need to be updated. There's some additional information needed on the hydraulic loading from the site. There are discrepancies that actually with the higher, the less bedroom count, you're showing higher water use at this time. So those kind of impacts should be addressed. Once again, the blasting, I have a comment on ambulance service. The, looking to have you explain the reduced bedroom count versus the increased sewer and water flow, which I just talked about, the condominium project in 2009, was a larger unit count and had had less water use, and I know that has to do somewhat with the bedrooms, but there's a discrepancy in the gallons per day per unit that needs to be addressed, and that's in my comment 31. Similar with the sewer documenting that 75 gallons per day per person. That seems low based on the health department standards. The design components of the sanitary sewer plant I talked about previously, that that comes up as my comment 39. And then I have comments on the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan uses infiltration practices. And I have some comments, detailed comments on that plan that I'll provide you, but the soils on the site aren't very conducive to infiltration. There are requirements for testing that have not been completed yet. So if the infiltration practices are going to continue, we're going to need to see the the permeability testing. I believe that the SWIP identifies a five inches per hour infiltration and permeability in the area where there are some D and or C soils, which are not conducive to infiltration. So we'll need some additional information on that. But I'll provide Ross and Jay those comments on the detective comments on the SWIP separately. But I believe that the document should be updated per our comments and Ken's comments. I don't know if Karen has any, Karen Aaron has any comments yet, but at this time, we feel the document should be revised per our comments.
Karen Aaron, landscape architect.
So existing trees should be identified, and existing significant trees should be identified with species, size, and apparent health and condition, just to see if it's possible to save any of them. Especially in areas, like it's a big site, so it might make sense to just do it in areas where it's, could be possible to save, save the trees. And I could give you the definition of significant trees as per the pre tree, tree guidelines. And and the surrounding streetscape design was very important the first go around, and it's very important again, and to preserve as many of the existing trees as possible. That's it.
That completes your comments. Thank you, Karen.
Oh, oh, sorry, and stone wall, and we're supposed to have stone walls. You should have some stone walls around the entrances or something to announce the entrance and to make it feel like it's in the town of Newburgh.
Okay. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to planning board members. We'll start with John Ward.
Yes. I did it on at all Pat's comments, and at the same time, with the amount of units with the sewer, how's that being handled again? Pat?
The, John, right now, it's, there's, there's two alternatives. One is an onsite packaged sewage treatment plant to be constructed on the easterly portion of the site back by the wetlands and the stream. And the other alternative is to construct a sewer main connecting to the town's infrastructure, I believe, up at Holt's Corners. So two alternatives are there. Both of those alternatives, I believe, need more information concerning the the plans for those, any potential impacts. The offsite sewer and water alternatives do not, are not addressed in the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan as linear projects, and those should be addressed in in that document as well. So there's two alternatives for for providing the the water and the sewer. The water for the project is also proposed to be coming down from Holt's Corners to the, to the site.
And another thing was, when we had board business, we were talking of the buffer being bigger. They, it seems like it's smaller.
Along the property frontage?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's an important aspect. That was important during the last portion of the
project. That's why, that's why I'm saying it. And, well, I think there should be a gazebo in the front, since it's rentals and with a lot of children in the front, make it so it's safe for the children.
For for busing.
Yes.
So, John, we're handling that the same way we had previously. There's a gazebo. We're going to direct the kids to the emergency access as opposed to the main access, just plenty of parking behind the pool for parents who want to bring their kids there. We've provided a sidewalk and a gazebo at that southern end at the emergency access. It provides a good reason to keep it maintained, and it provides a safe spot for the parents and the kids to wait for the bus.
Very good. And this, and I think first time, you didn't even have a sidewalk there.
Correct.
I remember emphasizing that. All right. Thank you very much for us.
Dave Dominic.
Hey, Ross, while we're in that area of the gazebo and emergency access, just recall that emergency access is paved, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, because I think in initial site, like John was saying, that wasn't paved nor a sidewalk, so I'm glad that's resolved now. And just echoing what Karen said, I think identifying the entrance of of the complex is a very good idea. Keep it in line with other projects this type, this size within town will really blend in well. That's all I had, John.
Cliff Brown.
Sorry, sorry, had unmute. Just just echoing what was said so far, but one of the things I picked up from Karen's comments, and Karen, I suggested trying to save trees in some, some of the areas, and I was going to ask Karen if she can identify some of those areas where she would think those trees could try to be saved rather than just kind of like leave it open?
Yes, especially important along the buffer areas around the site and around like all the edges, because there's, I think the grading might be able to be revised to if there's significant trees in these areas, and then that would be helpful for the streetscape as well. And any, I think that, I think those areas are the most important, and I think we did, we did it on our first go around like the first time. I remember going out with somebody from Engineering Properties, and we tagged trees. I don't know if you have that information, but the trees are probably like five inches bigger, but we're so long ago. But I think that would be great, like right along all the roads especially.
Okay, if that can just be verified and checked out again, that would be good. And also, just kind of taken back by all the comments that Pat had, and a heck of a lot of cleanup work on this, and hopefully it'll get done pretty quick.
My only comment, Ross, Jay, is this, will this be a phased development?
That's a good question. We didn't discuss phasing at this point with the developer. The sewer treatment plant is in the rear of the site, so that, you know, there's Jay's face construction of it. So to some extent, we have to build certain amount of infrastructure to get to the sewer treatment plant. So we will address phasing in our research.
And again, that that determines which which sewer treatment alternative is ultimately selected. The plan does have a construction phase. The SWIP does identify construction phasing very detailed.
Thank you. No other comments. Ken Memmer.
Just in general, it looks like there's considerable work that has to be done on this supplemental form, and that's all.
Stephanie DeLuca.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of concerned with the amount of items that needed to be addressed. It's, it seems to be quite a bit, and I guess my, part of my concern, again, along with that is, you know, now with, I guess with the increased amount of units, you know, how will these capacities be, you know, affect the infrastructure? You know, that's, I was concerned, you know, how, you know, can this area sustain the increases on the infants, on the infrastructure with, I mean, this is a very large project, and it seems to be, you know, needing a lot of work. So those are just some of my concerns. And also, too, are there two, are there two access points? I'm not clear on the map. Are there two means of egress? Because you're mentioning a bus stop, and then I see a road A. So are there two?
Yes. Road A is the primary access. It's a boulevard access.
Okay.
And then there is a secondary access, which will be emergency only.
Okay.
So it will be paved. There'll be pavers off of off of 300, so that people don't mistake it for a driveway, a little bit less obvious. We don't want people pulling in there by mistake, so we have pavers up to the right-of-way line. There'll be a bar and a fence to prevent people from coming in there unless they're emergency personnel, and that will be paved beyond that. So it's the similar setup that we did at Brighton Green, and I think it worked pretty well there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Alley.
John, would this be a candidate for the new tree ordinance?
I think, I'll have Pat speak on this. I believe that existing projects will not fall under the proposed new local law, but Pat Hines, I refer to you.
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding that this project would not be under that. I will clarify that now that the town board has, I believe, taken action on that new tree ordinance, but I believe that because this is in the environmental impact statement phase, it most likely is exempt because of the amount of time and effort that's going into it, but I'll clarify that as well.
Okay. And just my second comment is, it's been on the, on the board for like eight years, nine years, and I just hope that it can sustain its feasibility now, since all the other projects have come into town as rental units. Personally, I'd like to see housing units, but it's their property. They, whatever they legally can do, they can do, but I just hope it's feasible and that it works for them.
Thank you.
John.
Ross, Ross, Jay, do you have any comments at this point?
I've reviewed the comments that Pat has. I don't have any questions about. I think Pat was very explanatory about what he was looking for. The sewer question, I can respond to that briefly. That the capacity is based on the number of residents. That was the basis for the original DEIS preparation. So with this style of unit, or actually resident, number of residents go down. So that's where the numbers change here. It's not based on bedroom count, but a number of residents, and we actually have a different population number per unit. And we'll explain that in our response. We did get draft speed limits from the DEC we received a few weeks ago, and we're working on the for detailed design of the plant.
And Karen, I did pull back the old plans to find all the significant trees that we had proposed to save the last time, and I believe they're on the plan, but I'll confirm that, and I will discuss this with you separately, and we'll go through it.
Great, thank you.
And the other ones that we need to.
Fantastic.
Jane, are you here this evening? Jane Daly, did you say Jane Daly? Jane Daly, did you say Jane Daly is here?
Yeah, she's here. She's new.
Jane, do you have any, do you have any comments? Hi, do you have any comments?
No, we've been, um, going through everything that, uh, Kenneth sent and, uh, we're working on it.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
John Ward, I think I heard your voice in the background.
Yes, just refresh me what unit was it going to be for the seniors housing?
Where are the seniors? As part of the law, there was, uh, I think, I believe there's 26 or 27 that are required. As you look at the plan, it'll be up on the, the top left, um, of the two buildings. It'll be buildings one, two and three.
Very good. That's, I'm happy it's up there. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Dominic Adisco, planning board attorney, are you still with us?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good to see you.
Likewise, likewise. It's actually really good to see all of you, to be honest. Uh, very heartwarming. As Pat mentioned earlier, uh, you know, the review of a draft supplemental E I S, you know, is to, uh, confirm whether or not the applicant, uh, has addressed the items that were laid out in the scope. And so that's the purpose of the board's review at this time. And the goal is for the board to find that the applicant has, as far as the applicant's concerned, addressed items, uh, in the scope, uh, sufficient so that it's acceptable and ready for commence public review. At this point, you know, the board and the board's consultants have provided with the applicant with a detailed list of items that, uh, need to be addressed in order for the board to commence the public review portion of, of this document. And, uh, it, I just want to clarify that it's important to note that, that at this stage, you know, a draft supplemental E I S, you know, is basically the applicant's, uh, view. It's the applicant's draft. Uh, it is not necessarily, uh, you know, what is written in the draft is not necessarily the board's position. Uh, the board's position is developed and, and determined as part of the, uh, later steps in the secret process, which would be the final environmental impact statement. And then the finding statement, uh, which itself closes out the seeker process. And so we're not there yet. At this point, uh, the goal is to ensure that the public has enough information in front of it, uh, so that it can understand and comment on the project, uh, when we get to the mandatory public hearing.
Dominic, I know in some of the D I S stages and scoping, are there, are there timeframes tied into an S D I S?
Yes, uh, there, there are timeframes, but they don't actually have any teeth to them, uh, to put it bluntly. So where we are now is the board is timely providing comments, uh, to the applicant, uh, for them to, uh, prepare a revised version of, of the draft supplemental environmental impact statement. And when they resubmit, uh, there is a 30 day time period then after their next submission, uh, for the board to provide them with any further comments with a provision, however, that, that the comments that are provided at that second round, uh, relate, uh, primarily to the comments that were provided at this round. So in other words, it's, it's not fair and seeker realizes that it's not fair to an applicant unless there is new information that's discovered to, uh, provide additional comments that could have been made at this time.
Thank you. Okay. So at this point in the meeting, uh, Jay Samson, uh, Ross Wingworth, are there any additional questions or comments before we say thank you for your time and please start working on the comments that we discussed?
I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Jane, thank you for being present this evening. And, uh, we look forward to receiving the revised, uh, documents and maps associated with it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
We have two items aboard business this evening. Uh, their request for extensions. And the first one is the lands of Sazone. They're requesting a six month extension from April 16th through October 16th, 2020. Pat, do you want to state anything on this now?
Yeah, this is an 11 lot subdivision that was approved circa 2006 or seven. So it, it's received numerous, numerous, uh, extensions. We had previously stated, uh, that we believe that a final public hearing, which is a provision in your zoning should be held prior to any action being taken. Uh, the, the, this neighborhood could have turned over any of the neighboring properties or people that were at the public hearing in 2006 or seven may no longer live in this area. And there could be very new people, uh, living in the area and potentially impacted by the project. So I would suggest that any extension, uh, incorporate the fact that a future public hearing would be required. There are procedural matters, bonding, uh, of public improvements need to be looked at. Uh, we had previously approved cost estimates some 14 years ago or so. Uh, those would need to be updated. I believe the applicant is actively trying to sell the project. Uh, he, he was before us about a year ago and told us that, uh, so if they can find a buyer, it may proceed. But it, it, it's probably one of the longest standing projects that, uh, we've, we've had before us. And I think that prior to any approvals, that, that, uh, another series of review would be required.
And what, what do you mean by approvals? I'm not following you.
It, it has, uh, right now preliminary approval.
Right.
And prior to a final approval, I believe that there, there's going to be need to update procedural matters as well as we're suggesting that the board, uh, consider holding another public hearing, a, a final public hearing, which is, uh, your zoning has a provision for that. We often don't do it because the preliminary public hearings are very close to the finals usually. But in this time gap, I believe that the, the neighbors should, should have an, uh, the ability to comment on, on and be updated on the fact that there even is a subdivision in their neighborhood.
Would you suggest to the board that we grant the extension from April 16th through October 16th?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have any pressing concerns. I don't know that there was any significant change in the neighborhood, since the last extent, uh, extension was granted. But this is, this is a longstanding extension. It's probably your longest extended project before the board.
So if we granted the extension, it was with the understanding that it's a preliminary approval now. And that's why it continually comes before us. But when the action is required for final approval, is at that moment in time, we will have a public hearing?
Yeah, it, it's certainly up to the board, but we would, I would suggest it just because of the time that's elapsed between the previous public input on this project.
Okay. Would someone make a motion to grant the extension from April 16th through October 16th, 2020? With the understanding that a public hearing will be required before final site plan approvals granted or final subdivision approvals granted? Frank Alley made the motion?
No.
This is Steve Dominic.
Dave, okay, excuse me. Uh, Dave Dominic moved for the motion to have a second.
Second.
Second by John Ward. I'll ask for a roll call vote, starting with John Ward.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ken Memmer? Stephanie?
Aye.
Frank, thank you. And our last item aboard business is Longview Farms. Uh, that slash Summer Kim is requesting a six month extension again from April 16th through October 16th, 2020. And Heinz, would you speak to us on this?
Yeah, this project has not quite as long a history as the previous one, but it, it's getting there. Uh, there are some legal issues with this project that, uh, are being worked out regarding ownership of some small slivers and tracts of land with some other subdivisions that were associated with it. That's been the holdup on this portion of the project. I believe the applicant's representative is, is on the meeting as well. I don't know if they have any input, but this one, uh, again, no significant changes since the last extension, but it's a 2006 job number with probably 2009 preliminary approvals out there.
Tom DePuy, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
We're, we're all listening. What do you have to say?
Okay. Um, yeah, we're trying to, uh, straighten out some legal issues. Uh, I had submitted a letter. We were close to, uh, two foreclosures. They've gotten a little delayed now, but, uh, um, we're going to proceed in, uh, submitting, uh, drawings and, and start the final, um, subdivision approval process. And, uh, probably the same suggestion should be made that a public hearing be held because there's been a lot of different adjoining owners since we last held a public hearing. So, uh, we wouldn't be objectionable to that. Um, and, you know, get some additional public input on the final, uh, plans.
Yeah, that, that would be my suggestion as well. We talked about that the last time the project was before for an extension.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. That being said, then would someone make a motion to approve the six month extension for Longview Farms Summer Kim? From April 16th through October 16th, 2020? With the understanding that, uh, prior to final subdivision approval, that a public hearing will be held?
So moved.
John Ward, was John, was that John Ward?
Yes, second Frank Alley.
Second Frank Alley. Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote, starting with John Ward.
Aye.
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 Myself, yes.
I can.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And at this point, for, for closing of the meeting, I'll have Dave Dominic, uh, present any questions or not questions, but Dominic, do you have anything to say before we move to close the meeting of the 16th?
Uh, no, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, other than I want to thank everybody for enduring, uh, through, uh, a virtual meeting. Uh, it takes a bit of patience, uh, and, and some finesse and, and, uh, and some perseverance. And, uh, I think, uh, everyone has shown, uh, extraordinary commitment to ensuring that, uh, things can continue, uh, during this incredible time. So thank you.
And thank you.
Don, I got it.
Um, I have just one quick question. Do you have the address? Is there like an address for these two pet projects? Um, where are they located? Summer, the Summer Kim, where, what's the address?
Summer Kim's up off of Latin Town Road by Merritt Lane.
Okay.
Holmes Road of that area and Zazone's off of North Forstertown, I believe. I'm shooting from the head here.
It's off of North Forstertown Road and plus or minus, it's probably 1500 to 2000 feet west of Frozen Ridge Road. It's on the north side of North Forstertown Road. And what distinguishes the property is a two story home that I would say dates back plus or minus about a hundred years. White clapboard.
Okay. It's right around the corner from me. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Don, I have one quick thing.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, to say, uh, thanks to yourself, uh, Dominic, Pat, Ken, Michelle, Karen, our advisors. You know, I think this, this first time, uh, our virtual meeting was, was a real home run and, and, uh, really great job by everyone. Uh, I echo Dominic's, uh, sentiments, but also, uh, himself. And, and like I said, our advisors were key and, and yourself of getting this meeting off the ground and, and great job, fellows. Great job, ladies.
Thank you.
Ditto on my part.
Well, if I may, it was, uh, Ken Worsted that made us all look good. Ken, thank you so much for, for providing that technical support. It's, uh, it's quite a bit to, uh, to manage. Uh, and so very much appreciated.
Yeah, no, no problem. I, I enjoy doing it and I did notice, you know, I think it probably helps divide and conquer because with people popping in, uh, during your talking, I was able to let them in and I'm sure that happened vice versa. So I think it went well. Uh, just one comment on the, um, on one of the board business items, I noticed on this one, it had said that the current approval was to expire in, uh, March 2020. I know the, it extended from today's date, but I don't know if that means that there's going to be a lapse in the approval.
I think, well, I think what happened, Dominic, there also was, uh, it was a timing matter of just coming up with an agenda to make an agenda out of it. That's really what happened.
Yeah, they, they applied, they applied in a timely manner and it was, uh, just getting it out of meeting that, that transferred it over.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And in, in that circumstance, uh, the approval is continued until the board can consider it.
Thank you.
All right then, if someone would make a motion to close the planning board meeting of April 16th, 2020.
So moved.
Motion, motion by John Ward. Second was that Cliff Brown?
How's myself, John? Dave Dominic.
I apologize. Uh, a second by Dave Dominic. I'll ask for a roll call vote, starting with John Ward.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Uh, well, be thankful that you're home.
Well, be careful of traffic.
I'm going to close up the planning board office and head home. Uh, thanks all. Have a pleasant.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.